This is a call to order, the June 1st, 2022, regular meeting of the Duck Town Council. At this time, I'd like to ask Town Manager Feedley to sign the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Going on to item number two, public comments. If anyone would like to talk to the council this evening, please come forward to the podium, state your name and address. Limit your comments to three minutes. There being no one, we'll close public comments. Going on to consent agenda. This time, the consent agenda includes the minutes from the April 20th, 2022 mid-month meeting and certain budget amendments. Then I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes five to zero. Item number four, special presentations, we have none at this time. Item number five, public hearings, we have none at this time. Six old business items deferred from previous meetings. Discussion consideration of the proposed full year 2023 budget. This time, I'd like to turn it over to Town Manager Havens.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not making a presentation this evening. You've had it, this budget's been presented to you at least twice, I think, three times. So you've seen it, you've heard my pitch, so mainly it's, we're just bringing it back to you all. We've received no public comment whatsoever about this year's budget. So what we're asking is for a motion to adopt the budget ordinance, which, when you do that, will also adopt the schedule of fees and the pay-in class. And then also included in that motion to adopt the capital improvement plan. And all those were, all those documents were made part of your agenda packet for tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Drew. Back to the council. Is there any further discussion on the budget? Any questions for the town manager?
I just want in terms of where we publicize it, because I really, as I was stating right before the meeting started, I really wasn't, I love the way we've got the capital improvement budget, uh, pro, plan laid out. It's, I think it's extremely clear and really helpful to anybody who's trying to understand where the money's flowing. And certainly, the budget itself, the budget ordinance itself is a nice summary, but that capital improvement plan, so I just, is it, is it going to be in a very easy place to track on the website so people can refer to it?
Yes, so the entire budget document, and I know we've had some talk before, it does add up to over 200 and something pages when it's all done, but it's a complete document. And it really, the goal of the document is for anyone to be able to pick it up and understand where all the money comes from and where it goes to and why. So it will be on the website. This year, during the budget process, we gave more digital ink in the e-news to the budget and the process. So we've been very much out there this year. And I suspect because we're not increasing the tax rate, that could be one of the reasons that we're not getting any significant public input.
Yeah, I mean, my, my comment would be that to Drew and the staff, I thought it was well-prepared. I think you did a very good and accurate assessment of the expenses. I think the, the revenue is conservative, which is good. So I think we won't have any surprises there, hopefully, you know? Yeah? And maybe if they are surprises, they'll be good ones. So, and, and it was nice to see that we're, you know, well within all of the covenants we've established. We have plenty of room there. So that, that speaks to the physical soundness of, of the community. So it was, it's a good budget.
Good job.
Yeah, I would just add too, that I think this year's process with the changes you made was very streamlined, very effective and very efficient, and got us to this point with basically no discussion. So we thank you and your staff for that.
Yeah, and it's, a lot of the lifting goes to the staff, too.
Yes.
A lot of work that they put into getting it to this point.
With that, I'll entertain a motion, but there's no further discussion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the 2022-23 budget ordinance with attachments and the 23 to 27 capital improvement plan.
Any further discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes five to zero. Going on to new business, the first item is going to be discussion consideration of authorizing a public hearing under ordinance 22-04, amending the elevation certificate requirements in the town's flood damage prevention ordinance. This time, I'll turn it over to Senior Planner, Sandy Cross.
Good evening, Mayor Kingston and council members. Many of you may recall, back in February, Joe brought several zoning text amendments to the council for consideration. Of those elevation certificates was, was one of those items with our staffing situation. This is the only one that's come forward so far outside of the misdemeanor one that Drew took care of, I believe, last month. Just a little quick background on this, we did take this to planning board back in July of 2021. And that, at that time, we were still kind of fresh in what was happening with risk rating 2.0, which is a new way of figuring out what your insurance rates are going to be. We now have almost two years since we adopted our floodplain ordinance in 2020, which implemented a new higher regulatory standard that regulates outside of the special flood hazard area. So we did that in 2020. Risk rating 2.0 went into effect October 2021, and we kind of, we're like, we don't know what's going to happen with all that. Now fast forward to April, May, June 2022, and we have seen enough with risk rating 2.0 and heard enough from FEMA to know that they are certainly not using elevation certificates to rate. And that was one of the reasons why we didn't bring it back in 2021. So fast forward now, what we did this second round before planning board was we talked to, talked to some of the surveyors about what the cost implications are and found out, you know, there are, there are some significant costs associated with getting an elevation certificate. You know, whether it's a single time a surveyor goes out or whether they're out there multiple times, it all varies. And we did confirm that risk rating 2.0 is not require, is no longer required to purchase coverage, wait, an elevation certificate is no longer required to purchase coverage. And I know that Donna had mentioned that, um, that elevation certificates are not mandated for insurance rating purposes. I do want to clarify that that's only outside of the special flas, flood hazard area, but actually, that might not be right either. Regardless, it's not important for rating purposes. Some of the other communities, Manio, Killable Hills, Southern Shores, and Deer County, all took an approach when we adopted our 2020 floodplain ordinance that they would not require elevation certificates for properties in the shaded X zone and X zones if they could show on their survey that they were above their local elevation standard. And most communities adopted an eight-foot, Nag's Head adopted a nine-foot, Duck adopted a 10-foot. Kitty Hawk, Nag's Head, and Duck chose to require an elevation certificate at the completion of a project to verify that. Taking this back to planning board, this second round, we gave them four different options to consider, and in the end, they all agreed and voted that the option that we had presented with your package tonight was what they would recommend for council, which would remove the requirement for elevation certificates at the completion of a project if you were in a shaded or unshaded X or shaded, or shaded X or X zone, provided your survey can reflect that your ground elevation is above that 10-foot elevation. So what we're asking for tonight is authorization to advertise this for public hearing. I would expect that it will be a much shorter public hearing than you had last time, if you authorize us to go ahead and advertise that.
So Sandy, this is an either-orish situation? They can do either, right?
You can do either.
Yeah.
You can say, don't advertise it, you can say advertise it, you can certainly open it up for discussion if you like, if you're not, if you have questions about why we went this route or why we need it.
No, no, I'm saying, whoever, the developer can go either way with the certificate or the other way, right?
I mean, sure, they could use, they could certainly provide an elevation certificate.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
In fact, I mean, I still, from my perspective as a floodplain manager, I'm still going to always err on the side of an elevation certificate because even with risk rating 2.0, there's a lot of different things that go into that, and there's a lot of folks that are not really sure how that all plays out in terms of money. And so if, if you're just using it, if you don't have an elevation certificate and you're getting rated under risk rating 2.0, it's certainly, it could help you if you have that, all that detail, because there's a lot more detail on an elevation certificate than you're going to get on a survey.
Thank you. Additional questions here, Sandy?
Ultimately, though, there's no change in the, in the elevation that we adopted the last time, the 10-foot.
I'm sorry, I can barely hear you.
So there's no, no change in that 10-foot elevation. This is whether or not they have the certificate.
So we are not recommending a change to the local elevation standard, we are simply recommending a, or, planning board is recommending a change to the elevation certificate requirements of the floodplain damage prevention ordinance.
The main benefit is saves money, correct?
It saves money for those folks that are in a shaded X or a unshaded X flood zone. We would still, we would still require that if you're in a special flood hazard area.
Right. It's just if you're in the zone that, whatever that is now, they determine it doesn't flood anymore.
Well, which we, we all know may not actually be accurate, which is why we implemented this ordinance with the local elevation standard to begin with.
No, that sounds, that sounds good.
So we're, we're figuring out here whether or not we want to have a hearing about this, is that correct?
Yeah, the issue is, do you want to discuss sending this to public hearing? And so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we advertise for a public hearing for number, ordinance number 22-04, amending the elevation certificate requirements for the town flood damage prevention ordinance.
For the July 6th, 2022 meeting?
In our July meeting.
Any discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, all, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say aye. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy, and the town council.
Sandy, thanks, planning board.
7B, new business, discussion consideration regarding delivery notice, noise.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an item for council to discuss. I don't have a formal presentation, you received a memo from me. We've received complaints this year and last from one resident who lives adjacent to a commercial use. And the complaint is that ice delivery is making an inordinate amount of noise. So when these ice deliveries happen, and they are very early in the morning or late at night, depending on your perspective, in the, in the low single digits, 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning, the bags of ice are thrown from the back of the truck to the ground to break, to break the ice up in order to get it back in the, into the freezer for sale. It's that noise that's been disturbing to this resident. Our ordinance, as, as it's written now, requires either one complaint from one resident backed up by a, a police officer in order to go through the process of charging someone criminally, I believe, correct, Jeff? Chief? Yeah, so it's a criminal, it's a criminal charge. Or two complaints from, or complaints from two different people living in two different households. We've only heard from one, one person that's had this issue. We, the police have tried to, to help mitigate the sound that's happening there. Chief, do you want to just kind of talk to what we've done, or what your, not we, what your team has done to, to try to mitigate this?
Sure. It's been an ongoing issue for about two seasons now. So initially, we worked with the ice company to try and deaden the sound, and they designed a special board. What, what really happens here is when the ice leaves the plant in Virginia, it's not all the way frozen. And then as it rides in the truck down here, it freezes solid, so the cubes freeze together. So in order for them to maximize the number of bags that they put in the cooler, they need to break it up somehow. So they use a, a board, basically, and they would slide it down the board, it would hit the concrete, break up. So we worked with them to design a board that had cushioning at the bottom that would help to deaden the sound, they lined the board with insulation, trying to, to make an impact. And, and I think it did, but it's still bothering this resident. And the issue we've had from the police response is, you can have two different officers go at two different times, and they'll have two different opinions about whether it meets the, the elements of our noise violation ordinance. And what we found, for the most part, is most officers believe it's a legitimate commercial function, and they're not comfortable filing a criminal charge, especially against the driver who's simply trying to, to, to make a livelihood. So we've been very reluctant to take criminal action, and we, like I said, we've tried to do everything we could to make it better, and we simply have run out of options at this point. We've tried to work with the company and persuade them to, to change their delivery times, and they tell us that there's just no way they can do that and still accomplish the, the route from, basically from Corawa to Hatteras.
Thank you.
So that, that really is, is, in a nutshell, and I, in the memo, laid out probably three options, there are probably more than you may have thought of. One is to, is to do nothing, continue to work with the vendor as much as we can in terms of getting cooperation. Another would be to modify our existing ordinance to prohibit any noise from delivery between certain hours, so 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM, or 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM. And the other would be to modify our business regulations to prohibit all deliveries to all business during certain hours. So you can do nothing, modify the noise ordinance to put in, you know, prohibition against any delivery noise, period, in certain hours, or just a blanket ordinance that says, can't make any deliveries between certain hours. And, you know, Chief Ackerman's folks and those of you that are out and about real early in the morning, you see the, the trucks coming in, the, you know, the Cisco and the other food delivery trucks that are getting into restaurants real early in the morning. It's not uncommon for me to see them, you know, in that, kind of that 5:30 range. Again, this is the only complaint we've had. And they're, they're trying to get in and out before traffic builds, and
Of course.
The food deliveries particularly, you know, if you think about trying to deliver, make a delivery to Duck Donuts, you need to be out of there before Duck Donuts opens with a, with a semi-truck. So that's, that's kind of the background, and we'll happy to answer any questions, but we're just looking for, for guidance. We're not looking to adopt any ordinance changes or anything tonight, we're just looking for direction from you as to what you would like us to do.
I guess it just seems to me it's a single person, single complaint, single incident, which is, I, I can't, I don't know if it occurs every day or a couple times a week, probably in the wintertime it doesn't matter, but it just seems to me to, to make a change, the impact of business community and the difficulty of making deliveries, you know, into the town of Duck, especially in the summertime, I don't think one incident really calls for a major change. I think working with the ice company would be the best solution, from my perspective.
Just to answer your question, Mayor, so it's a, delivery occurs twice per week, and there's two businesses that we know of in town that use the same vendor. We've had no complaints from the one that's, that's on the south end of town. But in the summer, it's generally twice a week.
Did it work when they put down the platform and the, the?
In my opinion, I think it made a big difference, but it, it didn't make a difference to the, to the resident.
Yeah.
It did?
It did.
The resident felt that it was still too loud. And we just got to a point where there was just nothing more that the vendor could offer to, to improve the situation.
What are the hours now that allow deliveries?
There is no restriction.
I know that the trash folks come out really early too, and I just, from people that I, you know, that I know that live in town and have heard, you know, that, what needs to happen early in the morning around here, just to get, as you say, things happening before people get up and moving around themselves. It does seem like it's really difficult to, you know, let's say you did restrict, it would be so difficult to police that, I, I can't imagine. I mean, and I wouldn't, I would say six would be not enough leeway for people, you know, based on everything. I know we had one complaint about the trash several years ago for residents and, but I didn't, and I, I don't know if that's when we developed this whole thing about two people needing to complain, because has that come up at all, that this fellow needs to get another complaint in with them to make a difference?
He's aware of the, of the wording in our ordinance, and I know that the chief's folks have spoken with him, and I have as well.
So, I mean, and I hate that it's frustrating for somebody, but...
Yeah, I mean, I, I looked at also that little survey you put out, and we don't seem to have any. Of course, it wasn't a complete survey, but it was an indication, you know, we don't seem to have any before or six or after two, other than this one, apparently. But I can sympathize with someone who has to hear it every time, you know, a, a guy comes and drops off, drops off his ice, but putting, putting, you know, a curfew, or if you call it on deliveries, might be a little, a little strong. Have we talked to Winx themselves? Have they tried to influence their vendor? Do we know?
Couldn't hear your question.
Have we talked to Winx? Have they tried to influence their vendor at all, in addition to us talking to the vendor?
The vendor was not willing to offer anything.
Yeah.
They felt like it was just a, they weren't doing anything outside the norm, trying to operate business. You know, they weren't uncooperative, they just felt there's, there's nothing more they can offer from their standpoint.
Yeah. Well, do, would it be your sense that if, if you spoke to them again and asked them to reinstitute their padded board policy, you could get them to do that?
They've, they've kept that
Oh, they're still doing that?
From day one, yeah.
Oh.
They were very, the, the ice company was very receptive to that, and, you know, they came up with the design for it and built it at their own expense and put this in place, and it's remained ever since.
Okay.
Jeff, what kind of noise? I mean, you said they're going down a board, bottom of it's insulated, the, it hits the ground, but it's, once the one bag hits, there's another bag right behind it, so it just, I, I don't understand what the, where the noise is coming from.
It's, it's actually a two-person operation, so basically, as, as fast as one guy's unloading the truck, sliding it down, there's another man at the bottom who's loading it onto a dolly to load it into the ice. So it's, it's a thud, is basically what it, it is. Each time it reaches the bottom, it makes a thud, and it's a wide-open area with, with very little tree cover, and the sound does carry. But it's, it's been very difficult because our ordinance, it criminalizes the activity.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not a criminal offense, really.
The difficulty has come to the police department.
Yeah.
This is not, it's not music in a pool, it's not, it's not a late-night party. It's, it's somebody trying to make a, so it's been very difficult to try and appease both sides here, we just run out of options.
What would happen if he unloaded where the three ice boxes are instead of where the single one is? At Winx, he's got three, I call it the front porch facing the liquor store and only one in the back. What would happen if he unloaded closer to 12? Because you got the side of the building for a block in the truck.
I could certainly talk to him about that.
Ramp, ramp access is on the east side of the building.
Right, I'd have to
I could question another 20.
Sure you've ta, I'm sure you've looked at that too. I mean, just even moving the truck was my thought, or moving the boxes to get him away from the back of the building.
Yeah, I think their, I mean, their, their perspective probably is the least amount of manpower in order to get it accomplished.
Sure.
And they, at first, they thought the bigger issue is their truck running, diesel truck running. So they even, it was their idea to turn off their truck while they're here, you know, that would cause them to have to turn off their refrigeration.
But that's not the complaint, though.
It's not the complaint, no, it's never been the truck noise, but they, they actually went that extra step to try and eliminate all noise that they could.
I mean, I think we've got to be realistic, I mean, you've got to take into consideration, not only businesses got to be open and ready to go, but you've also got residents and visitors to the town that are up early, that want, in fact, want those services, including ice, fishing, going to the beach, whatever, and to put a business at a disadvantage because, in fact, they can't get a delivery until 10 o'clock in the morning and affect their business. I don't think it's right. I think it's a single incident, and I think we work with Holiday Ice and see what we can do to better, whether they change the location of the truck or move the ice or just soften it when they hit the ground. I mean, to me, that sounds like the, the most feasible thing for a single incident. To change our ordinance for this doesn't make any, any sense to me with respect to the impact on our residents and our businesses and our visitors. That's my opinion.
Well, and we've got, what time are the trash trucks starting now?
Seven.
They're early, you know, they can be
Seven.
Oh, seven? Yeah.
Well, the, the commercial trucks are out earlier than that.
Yeah, the, so the commercial trucks are coming in at six.
Okay.
Anyway.
We, we've allowed them, when this last, when we, we changed back to the one route, council will recall that we said, feel free to start at 5:30.
Right.
Right.
Again, the goal is to get
Get them off the road.
Those big trucks out of here and off of Duck Road before traffic builds during the day.
Well, the food delivery trucks are out before six also, with their compressors running.
Right.
And they got the freezers on them, so they, they can't shut them off.
You know, I may be wrong about this too, but I think some of the other towns start picking up their trash 3:00, 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning.
Right.
Does it go along all winter, through the year, twice a week?
No, I, I think, well, I think they get ice deliveries outside of the season, that doesn't seem to be a large an issue. It's the quantity of ice they bring in, in the summer, and the, and I think it's more the quantity than the frequency.
Yeah.
Okay.
And this particular vendor sells a lot of ice, and that's, you know, in, in February, they may still sell some ice, but they're not selling 500, 600 bags a day.
So it doesn't take as long, and so they just in and out?
Exactly. So this time of year, it's, it's a lot more ice, a lot more thuds.
A lot more, it's a lot longer to do, to get the job done.
Right.
I would, I would, I would agree that I would really like to continue to work with the, you know, the location or the vendor. Vendor seems like he's trying to do what he can or she can to get the job done expeditiously, maybe just rearranging the truck location so that the thuds happen more out toward Duck Road. I think at this point, it's, it's premature to try to, to change it. And I, I am really glad that the, that you're, that the, that the police force is sensitive to the criminal aspects of this. Agree that it shouldn't be.
I think most of the comments have been consensus with your first alternative, and that is basically just not change ordinances or rules and regulations, but to, in fact, continue to work with the vendor to see what we can do about that one situation. I think that's pretty much consensus.
Well, I was just asking, Rob, what he was thinking.
I'm just thinking if there's another way to try to mitigate that noise, like the, either the vendor or the, the ice company, to put up, you know, like a, a moving company blanket that you used to, put that on, on a frame between that, the complainant and, and where this ice gets delivered, and it should muffle some of that sound, in addition to the, the padded board.
What I'd say is the, the ice company owner, I've been working with him for a while, and he's, seems to be open to whatever they can do, so
Yeah, I mean, it's just a thought, you know, just something to keep the, it'll, it'll interrupt the, the sound a little bit before it goes up the hill.
Yeah, I, I think that's a reasonable suggestion, and I'd be glad to take Yeah, I, I think that's a reasonable suggestion, and I'd be glad to take that back to him and, and look at that, positioning, anything else we can possibly do.
Yeah.
To, to try to appease.
That would be excellent. We can't do much more than that.
Thanks.
So I think once again, Drew, we're going to leave it in your hands, you're in the chief.
Okay.
And I think that's consensus.
We'll keep working away at it. You know, Mr. Moon, he's got a, a good suggestion, and also moving the, moving the truck a little bit if we can, depending on where that ramp location is. Yeah, we'll, we'll keep chipping, chipping away at it. That's a bad.
Chipping, yeah, that's, yeah.
That was a pretty good pun.
That's a pretty cold comment.
Oh, boy, here we go.
Oh, no.
All right, moving on to item number eight, items referred to in presentations from the town attorney. Robert?
Mayor, I don't have any presentation this evening, but it's currently available for any questions.
Any questions for our attorney? Thank you, Robert. Item number nine, items referred to in presentations from the town manager. Drew?
So we'll ask for our department reports, Ms. Legner, Chief Ackerman, Ms. Cross, Deputy Chief Batlet, and then Ms. Barnes. Y'all got here so fast.
Fourth of July parade is on. We have many, many things in place, but I just wanted to give you guys an update on how we're doing on the parade, so registration is open on our website and has been for about a month. So anyone who's watching tonight, if you're, if you'd like to be in the parade, please feel free to get online and register, or to attend that day. Just as we normally do, we'll have the parade, and then we'll have a community celebration in the town park on the green, and we'll have live music refreshments and the awarding of trophies. So right now, we currently have 12 groups or floats registered, plus the ground, grand marshal, council members, the Southern Shore Fire Department, and we have kids on bikes, and then the dogs that walk, and we usually have a group of veterans as well. So in 2018, we did have 32 floats total, but we still have three weeks before registration has ended, so we think we'll get there. And if I can keep moving, there we go. So as I said, registration's open on our website, and Betsy is going around putting up flyers and posters for the event as well, to encourage people both to attend and to register. We did start our Fitness on the Green this past week, the earliest we've ever started, and it was well-attended. Next week, we go up to three events. On Monday, we have yoga with surf rescue, and one of the lifeguards is teaching that, and she also goes over surf rescue tips, mainly for children, but families as well. And the seventh and eighth are typical yoga on the green and dynamic flow. We are working on greener events, and this plays a little bit into Jazz Festival as well, working on our green travel certification. So this year, we are not going to be selling single-use water bottles, we'll have water stations, and we're really coaching the public to bring their reusable water bottles. We'll also be selling them, and of course, providing free cups. Just some quick updates on public information. I went and pulled our top website pages for May, just because I thought it was interesting. The homepage, obviously. The boardwalk followed that pretty closely, events with almost 1,500 views. Residential curbside waste and recycling is still pretty high. Our beach, and then visitor quick links, which is a new page I put in this year, that has links to everything, hopefully, that the visitor would want to see quickly, so it seems to be doing pretty well. Um, we do have our fridge cling, I'm picking it up tonight at Access, the updated fridge cling. So it'll be available tomorrow morning, starting at the town office, and I'll be contacting all the property management companies to see who wants to put those on their fridges. And I did call out, we have a call out here for trash and recycling, can roll out and roll back. It's very obvious as well, and we were able to fit in some accepted recyclables information. Uh, we've been pretty busy this time of year. We start getting into all of the National Recognition Weeks, so we completed Hurricane Preparedness Week outreach, and that comes from National Weather Service. We completed our beach safety week outreach, that comes from the U.S. Lifeguard Association, along with the National Weather Service. And Betsy is working on bike and pedestrian safety, and that does include bike helmets, 50, I think, that the police got from the Bike and Pet Coalition, so we'll be working on fun ways to give those out. And our, our next work is going to be on golf cart and low-speed vehicle outreach for the public, especially our visitors. And that's all I have. Any questions?
Christian, I have one. You talk about the water stations, so you're not going to sell water bottles. I mean, how big are those water stations going to be? Because hot concert nights or hot times of the magic show, you could consume a lot of water.
So, um, people, I mean, so we used to sell water bottles at the merchandise stand, so people still go there, except it's off to the side, so they don't have to wait in any kind of line to get water, and we did start implementing it in the second half of last year, and it went pretty well. And so for things like Fourth of July, we'll have a lot of water stations, but then for smaller events. It seems to be right now more accessible, because you don't have to wait in line to purchase, but again, it also gives us the ability to expand or contract, so if we want to put two or three five-gallon watering stations out for a hot concert, we can do that, whereas we used to only be able to sell water bottles at one location. And we do have two bottle filling stations on our campus as well. One is on the side of the town hall building, and one is next to the restrooms.
Christian, a couple of things.
Yes, sir.
Uh, one, I went to the Shakespeare Comedy of Errors put on by that UNC group.
Uh-huh.
And they did a really nice job.
Great.
Yeah, they did, and I, and I was pleased. I wasn't sure what the attendance would be like, you know, for Shakespeare, uh, in the summer, in
Right.
the beach, but it was pretty well-attended. It was, it was a fun, it was a fun thing.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, second, as you know, I'm the rep to the GEAC com, uh, committee.
Yes.
And I know you're way more familiar with that than me, but um, they've done some public safety videos, like one on the beach safety, specifically the hole digging and all that. Do we attach those to our website?
We do, yes, so that's the part of the More Beach, oh, not More Beach to Love, sorry, Love the Beach, Respect the Ocean campaign.
Okay.
And that is a group campaign that was put together by the county and the municipalities in 2018. So we all have access to all of those videos and all of that collateral material, so we do mix that in with duck branded items.
Okay, and then the safety one on the bypass, bike and pedestrian safety.
Um, I, we have not been using the one on, on the bypass, because it so strongly references the bypass.
Yeah, I know.
But we certainly could, we've been trying more to focus on our crosswalk.
Okay, thanks.
Bales?
No, thanks for all the work on, on everything. I had some folks from out of town who were at the yoga and loved it.
Yes, oh, and we are still live streaming the yoga and the dynamic flow that was so popular during COVID that people have requested that, so we're still doing that as well. All right.
Thank you, Christian.
Who's next?
Hello again. Forgive me, I was very short last time, and I'm going to redeem myself tonight. Well, redeem might not be the right word.
Even if we said it was okay?
Thank you. Just quickly through our, our regular slides, traffic enforcement continues to be up. Unfortunately, motor vehicle crashes are also rising, which is, is something we anticipate this time of year. Still happy with four for the month of May, and I'd like to keep that into the next few months. Business checks still a high priority for us in the evenings. Our extra patrol checks have dropped off considerably as folks are back in town for the season, and then arrests are rounding out our normal average of one or two a month. Call volume does continue to increase. I was looking at it today and really made me think back to 2020 and that dip, when virtually nobody was here. So we've come a long way from there and, and topping nearly 1,100 calls for the month of May, so our activity certainly has been up. A lot of that continues to be self-initiated activity on the part of the officers. Um, I wanted to talk a little bit about training we do. Been a lot of talk in the news lately about different trainings. So I want to talk about a couple of different areas that we focus on. One of the most important things to me as a department head is that we not only attend training, but we actually learn something at training and bring that back and put it into place. So got a great group of officers, a lot of them are more senior, and they really enjoy going to these classes and recognizing that we can't send 14 people away at the same time. So they do a great job of bringing back a lot of the, the new topics they learn about, new, new ways of doing things, and, and getting that around the different shifts. So really proud to, to be able to hear them in the other room telling other officers about what they've learned. Some of the mandated training that we do, the state mandates that we do 24 hours of training for each officer every year, and they, they decide the topics. And that, that always includes firearms training and qualification, legal update, juvenile minority sensitivity training, domestic violence training, and ethics. And then we get a choice as an agency of where we want to fill in the rest of the, the training. So this last year, this year, rather, we picked proactive wellness, which will tie into our wellness initiatives that will be going forward now that you've passed the budget, and we appreciate that. Enhancing community engagement, we talked a lot about subversive groups, that's certainly a, a hot topic for us. De-escalation, something that's also very, very popular, that a lot of officers don't understand exactly what that is. So we put a big focus on that this year, and then driver training has been something traditionally we have not been able to do. We've always tried to focus on driver training, in that you go out on a track and you drive, whether it be pursuit driving. We really reimagined that and realized that most accidents are occurring from really simple, stupid things. So we really hammered down in our driver training about what's causing accidents. The league does a great job as our insurer with sharing with us statistics. The vast majority of accidents that they pay out on are, are, are backing accidents, so we put a big focus on that. Our hope is this year to send two officers to driver training school, instructor school, so that they'd be able to actually come back, set up some driving courses, so we can actually get some behind-the, the wheels training there. We did have a number of officers that were able to attend the Ohio Patrol Driving School in Raleigh this year, something that the Ohio Patrol pretty much put on hold for the last three or four years, so I was glad to be able to do that, and they, they pick up the tab for all but the lodging on that, so it's a great opportunity for them to go. And then hazardous materials and bloodborne pathogens are something we always do. But our, our training doesn't stop with the 24 hours a year. Most of our officers receive anywhere between 80 and 100 hours of training a year. So after their, their mandated training's completed, we allow them to find specialized training that they're interested in, because we want them to go seek out things that have an interest to them, but also Lieutenant Clark does a really good job of seeking out training for them and, and coming up with training opportunities. So just some of the things we completed over the last 12 months. We're radar operator, now we have 100%, well, with the exception of me and Missy, our radar operators have radars in their cars. Intoxulizer operators, we still have some of our newest officers that are awaiting that training, which is held by the state. At-scene traffic investigation, and then some of the more advanced traffic investigation schools have been really helpful with some of the more complicated wrecks. Field training officer, first-line supervision. One of the things I've always tried to do is get as many officers through first-line supervision as possible. Even if they don't have the, the opportunity to become supervisors, within the coming years, it allows them to understand things from the perspective of a supervisor. Uh, and it's been very beneficial, because I, I think when, when a supervisor has to hand down discipline or correct something, they have a better understanding of why that's being done, and that it's, it's not just a punitive action, there's actually a reason for that. Human trafficking, something that, that really has touched eastern North Carolina, so we were glad to be able to do that. And then crisis intervention training, and as mentioned, the North Carolina Ohio Patrol Driving School. On the leadership side, our command team, we've had some great opportunities to, to attend employee development, internal affairs investigations. In fact, the league sponsored that, it was a great, great opportunity to go to that. Credible leadership, valor training, and then all of our, our command staff has completed the FBI LEDA Supervisors Command Executive courses, and then had an opportunity to go to their conference recently, so brought back some really neat information from that. So we spend a lot of time on training, it's a big budget item for us, but there's a, the amount of money we spend really is, is not measurable in terms of our liability reduction that comes from that training. So it is a really important focus, and I think it makes us a much stronger police department for it. Wanted to talk a little bit about the bus stop that we have been working really diligently on for the last, for the school season, and that's coming to an end. Just want to go back to some of the proactive steps that we've taken to address the safety concerns down there. We've had constant communication with the parents. It, it's almost near weekly that I speak with, with the, the primary parent down there about what's going on. We have a great dialogue about what we can do to improve things. That's been really beneficial. We put up the two, or had DOT put up the two school bus stop ahead signs, and then we put the radar speed sign up, and I'm going to talk in a few slides about some of the data we're starting to see from those signs, which is, we're showing that it's effective. Uh, and then officer presence, we've had a strong presence morning and afternoon there, near, I'd say 95% of the time or better. The only times we're not there are when, when we're called away to another location. Some of the challenges we faced, to be honest with you, we've had a less-than-desirable partnership from the Dare County Schools. And I, I don't want to lump them all into that, but, but particularly transportation. There were three incidents in the last month and a half that occurred where officers couldn't be there, and they were passing incidents, and we found out that the camera on the bus was inoperable. Not once, twice, or three times. I think that's unacceptable. Parents certainly agree it's unacceptable, and it's something we're trying to, to address. Unpredictable bus timing has really been a challenge for us, because it can tie up for, for a 15-minute window, it should be for a bus drop-off. We're sometimes seeing that swing into an hour, so that means that an officer's waiting there for up to an hour for the bus to arrive. And that's something I just have a really hard time understanding, I can't get that down. High traffic volume, as I'll talk about in a few slides in that area, and then calls for service that have taken us away. So I've really worked with the primary parent down there on this, and what we've come up together is really the next step is to move the bus stop off Duck Road. It's something we've asked for before. In North Carolina, it takes the school board to make that decision for the simple reason that the road we're asking them to route the bus down is a private road. And generally, the law says that they need to use public roads as much as possible. In this case, I think we've made a strong showing that that particular place on Duck Road is a dangerous place to have a bus stop. It's basically the gateway into our village, it's high-traffic volume, curves around a curve, it's in a speed zone as it, it slows down, and despite our best efforts, we've not been able to stop this activity, and that bothers me. But I feel like I'm at a point where there's no more I can do, so I need to address the next level of this, and that's finding a way to keep these kids safe. So our ask is that they reroute the bus down Settlers Lane. I had tried to communicate with the superintendent, apparently he's no longer the superintendent, so I never got a response. I'm going to give it a few days, and I'm going to go to the interim superintendent to try and start this dialogue about getting this to the school board. I say all this to say that it's very likely that I'll need support of the, of the council in form of a resolution or something to get this done. I think it's important, I think it's a fairly simple solution to the problem. We, there's other bus stops along Duck Road, but they don't occur in a location like the one at Settlers Lane occurs in, so it's something I'll, I'll come back to you, but we're certainly committed through the end of the school year, we've got another week or so, week or two. We're going to be there, we're going to do everything we can to keep the kids safe in that meantime, but it, it certainly is time for us to take a next step. And I think we can certainly demonstrate to the schools that we've done everything we can as a police department and as a town to try and address this, and we need some, we need some better cooperation on that.
Jeff, can I ask you a question on that?
Yes, sir.
I mean, that is a pretty bad intersection there, but how would you get the kids from?
I mean, that is a pretty bad intersection there, but how would you get the kids from that intersection to a safer location?
What we're routing, what we're proposing is they simply turn the bus down Settlers Lane and drop the children off in right in front of the house. There's a cul-de-sac at the end. They'd be able to make a U-turns nice and wide, come back out and turn onto 12. It completely eliminates the need to drop off children on the west side. And then there are some other kids, but they would be getting off on the east side so they don't have the issue of having to cross the traffic.
Yeah. Jeff, doesn't that same bus drop kids off in Sanderling and they turn off onto Oyster Catcher when they, so?
Yes.
Your argument should be halfway won.
I completely agree with you. I completely agree with you. It, it seems like a, a very simple ask and I hope it will be, but I, you know, there's a bit of a bureaucracy to get up to the point where we need to get, but.
And if there's anything, you know, we can do to reinforce getting those cameras fixed. I mean, God forbid something serious happens and these cameras aren't working, someone's going to be sorry.
Yeah, and that's, I don't even know what to say about that. I've, you know, the parent in question, I mean, she and I have had so many conversations about this over the last week and I, I spent an afternoon last week trying to find guidance in law that covered the operation of these cameras or policy and it simply doesn't exist. It comes down to just me simply being mystified as to why. Apparently there's a part and, and my, you know, I don't know how many school buses they have, but I've got 12 patrol vehicles that are outfitted with cameras and 14 body cameras. And I know they can be finicky and we can have issues, but we have a, we have backups for that reason. We know if there's an issue, we can fix it and fix it quick. And of all the buses that have an interoperable camera, the one that I am, maybe it's because it's Duck and it's important to me, but we've met, we all sat around a table. Councilman Mooney was there. We had a commitment from the director of transportation that they were going to be a partner with us on this and that simply has not, that hasn't, that hasn't come to be. So I, I just felt that it was time for me to, to go up and get an answer and I hope the superintendent could be a, a partner with us on this and I hope the next one will. But it may simply be us going to the director of the school board and asking for, for some assistance here. But I think what we're asking for is reasonable, doesn't cost them anymore and makes children safer. So to me, that's a no brainer. So I, I will, it's doubtful I'll have a whole lot of action on that as we get into summer, but it's something I very much want to have resolved well before school starts next evening, so in the spring, so, or in the fall rather. So I will be back before you with an update on that. They're back, if you haven't noticed.
Oh, God.
You know, several retreats ago, I spoke about what keeps me up at night. And while that shifted a bit over the last two years, low speed vehicles are keeping me up at night a lot. I have a lot of worry about this and I, I went to have lunch at Scarborough Lane the other day and as soon as I walked in, there was a whole family in an LSV, several little bitty children sitting in laps, not a single person had a seatbelt on and it just, all the possibilities of a bad accident went through my mind and it really made me think about it more. And we got to, we have to do more from the police department side. This just is something that, that we can't, we can't overlook. So want to talk a little bit about the difference between LSVs and golf carts and then want to talk about what our, what our approach is and will be ongoing to, to address this issue. So low speed vehicles are regulated by state law and state statute and it's fairly limited what municipalities have the, it's very limited what we can actually go in and what you can regulate on that. So essentially they have to be registered and insured, just like any motor vehicle. They have to be operated by a licensed driver. They're subject to all the traffic laws. Every occupant is required to wear a seatbelt. LSVs are required to have the seatbelts in them. And the one that I see the largest violation on is children under eight or 80 pounds have to be in a child safety seat that's properly secured in the vehicle. And it's very difficult for me to understand, I'm not a parent, but I look in a, in a Suburban and it's got all the seats in it and then they transition to the LSV and they don't take any of those with them. And you have none of the steel that surrounds you in your Suburban in that LSV. So it's my number one worry about these vehicles. They cannot be operated on the shoulder of any public street, road or highway. That includes our sidewalks and multi-use paths. Sandy can tell you, she, she's my number one alerter as she sees these things driving out there. So we need to have a emoji code for that. And they can't be operated on any road with a speed limit above 35 miles an hour. And what complicates this for a lot of folks is they see them driving down the road and then maybe their rental house where they own a golf cart and they think, well, I can do the same thing because they look identical, but they're very different in the eyes of the law. So golf carts cannot be operated anywhere on Duck Road and that is set in our ordinance. We're able to regulate golf carts use, but the, the difficulty is we can only regulate them on public streets. So it is a free for all on private streets. There's nothing we can do as a town to, to limit those or stop those. Now I know some of the communities have taken action to, to bar them, Sanderling being one of them.
We, we bar the LSVs too. I'm not sure we can, but we did because it's a private road.
Yeah, I, I, you know, until somebody challenges it.
Yeah.
I, I agree because it, it, it's an issue. So we got a bug or something there. Then the other issue is they, they same thing. They can't be operated on the shoulder of the road or on the multi-use pass and that's probably the number one violation we see for golf carts is people think, well, they can't be ridden on the road, but why can't I ride down the pedestrian path or down the side of the road? It'll be fine. Not the case. Can be, must be operated by anybody, somebody that's 16 years old, but they don't have to be a licensed driver. They cannot exceed 20 miles an hour. It does require that if it's equipped with seatbelts, I'm sorry, the driver and passengers have to be properly seated in the vehicle. It can't stand up and ride it. Seatbelts are not required, but the seating capacity dictates how many people can ride on them. And that's another violation we see all the time is six or seven people hanging on to them trying to get to the beach. And we had a terrible fatality about four years ago that was just that, that scenario. It must be operated in accordance with all appropriate state laws and local traffic laws and ordinances. So they're subject to most things. The biggest thing we see is, is DWIs on them. People are drunk driving and they're, they have open containers on them. Both things are prohibited if they're on a public street. And then the last thing is, which is actually a good thing, golf carts are subject to the same parking regulations as a traditional vehicle. So if golf carts really help us anywhere, it's that, they can park in more compact areas. Our ordinance does allow two carts to occupy one standard parking space, so there's a benefit there. But I also want to reiterate again that the trouble comes on private streets. We don't have a way to, to regulate them. So all we can try to do is educate. What are we doing about it? So Christian and I are working together. Christian's going to be launching a big social media push to get this information out. We've shot videos. We've got printed rack cards that we did several years ago to talk about the, the difference between LSVs and golf carts and how to operate them. We've had some great communication with some of the primary duck-based rental businesses. They've all agreed to make sure that in their rental contract, it specifies out verbatim what state law is and how they're regulated. And then they've agreed to allow us to give them stickers. So our, our intention is to produce bumper sticker sized stickers that have what I've come down to be the top five violations so that that sticker is placed right on the windshield, right in front of the steering wheel. So the biggest thing we hear when we stop one is I didn't know. So we want it right there in front of the driver to know that it has to be a licensed driver, that kids have to be in safety seats and people have to be seatbelted in. And then if all that doesn't work, I'm going to deploy my secret weapon. And that's not just Officer Gilreath, but 13 officers I have. This is, as I told you, this is something that keeps me up at night. I worry about these kids, worry about these families and the last thing I want is somebody going home without some member of their family this summer. So we're going to be out there. We're going to be enforcing LSV regulations and golf cart regulations. It's not because we're heavy-handed, it's because this really matters and people's lives really matter to us. So you're going to see us out there doing that. We, as always, we try to do as much enforcement education as we can, but there are certainly going to be times when a citation is the appropriate action to make sure everybody goes home safe. I promise I don't have too much more making up for Donna tonight. Radar speed sign, talked about it down here. So it's actually got some great analytic tools associated with it and what we've been able to go in just looking at May, we're finding that the number of vehicles we're slowing down averages between 50 and 60% a month. It doesn't necessarily sound like a lot, but from a law enforcement perspective, it's great. And the thing to remember about that sign, it's not actually in the 25 zone. So we, while the, the data doesn't show it, officer observations clearly show that they're continuing to slow as they pass that sign before they get to the 25 mile an hour zone. So we've seen, just visually, seen a huge reduction in the speed of vehicles that are coming around that curve into the village. It was, it was not uncommon to see them at 50, 55 miles an hour. We're not seeing that. So this sign has been highly effective as an education tool to slow those people down and the intent was to get them slowed down for the bus stop, but it's absolutely had a, a great effect on, on traffic in general coming in. Just want to talk about traffic volume. So we had a catastrophic failure of the, one of the LPR cameras at the north site. We're addressing that now. It is certainly my hope that we can have the new systems up and in place early in July. I think that'll be, be good for all of us to have that done. So I don't have LPR numbers for you tonight because they're, they're very much skewed with some of the data losses we saw at that site. And then it was a firmware update that froze our other sites. I'm pretty, pretty disappointed in our vendor right now about some of the issues, but that's nothing new. So I did want to show you some traffic volume numbers that were generated by that sign. So we are still seeing anywhere from 5,000 to 7,000 cars coming by that sign into Duck every day. So huge traffic volumes, 59 to 60,000 a month averaging over May. So as I was talking about that bus stop, it's a huge number of cars to be coming by a bus stop. And I don't know how many places in the country they would allow a bus stop on a, on a highway like that. So I hope that that's something we can address. And then lastly, before I show you the next slide, is any questions about it?
There's a lot of traffic.
I have a couple of them, Jeff. I do see those officers every morning out there and they're out there and I see them some mornings earlier, later. What about electric bikes on the roads?
You know, and I can't explain why. We, it's not been a major issue for us compared to other municipalities up the beach. The only correlation I can draw is that we don't, they're not being aggressively rented up here like they are, but technically by the letter of our ordinance, an electric bike is, is not able to operate on our pedestrian walkway because it is motorized by definition. Believe it or not, Southern Shores contacted me the other day. They had an issue with them on the beach being driven and wanted to know what our ordinance was and whether it prohibited that, so it does.
What about the, the kids who are in those, I guess are motorized skateboards?
Same thing. If they're the hoverboards, if it, by our ordinance, if it's, and it's, it's pretty broadly defined, it is motorized, whether it doesn't specify electric, gasoline or anything, if it has a motor, then it's prohibited from operation on our trail. So and we don't, we certainly have seen incidents of it, but it's, compared to what I'm hearing from other municipalities, we're not seeing nearly the numbers.
Eight o'clock. Eight o'clock in the morning.
Between eight and eight ten. Okay. Yeah, it's something I'll definitely have, have us keep a closer eye on.
Jeff, are you going to look at signage, going back to the golf carts? Do we have adequate signage and large enough signage? I mean, coming into town and coming into the village with staying off the multi-use, staying off 12.
Yeah.
Not, just not allowed?
I think we could do better job with the signage. The, the challenge I always feel with signage is sign pollution and that's, it's one of the issues and it, it, not to put anything else on, on community development, but at some point, I think we need to go back and look at at least the signs that public safety has recommended as a whole and decide whether they're still effective. But we, we put out the, the golf cart with a slash through on signs a few years ago and I, I can't tell you that I, I believe there's a, that they're effective. We do have a number of signs out that say no motorized vehicle, but I think that the challenge is there's so many entry points, it would be very difficult to cover everything. So maybe I'll go back and look at, at some of our hottest spots and frequent violation locations and see if we can improve some of the signage there.
Jeff, where are the LSVs and the golf carts rent, being rented from? Are they in town?
We have at least three vendors in Duck, Duck Base, that rent them. And there, I, I've lost count of how many outside businesses that will deliver. So proliferation is the word I'd use of the golf cart rental business and, and there is a, it, it's gotten more towards the LSV side. When it first started, there was a real mix of golf carts to LSVs. So I looked at a couple of their websites today and a number of them have actually done a really nice job of, of saying where are you staying? Here are the regulations for, for our carts there. So I think that's all communication. As we learn of these other outside businesses, we'll try to, to engage them as well and try to get the stickers to them too.
Good.
But it is a, I mean, it's well over a dozen companies now.
You know, plus you have homeowners that provide them.
And we're going to, the plan is to produce two different stickers. One that's, that's really geared towards the rental companies because universally, at least what we found is that they require their operators to be 21 years of age. So the one ask, ask they had of us was please don't put 16 on the sticker, please put 21. So it, it is in, it, it matches their rental agreement. And then we'd like to produce one for homeowners that might have it at a rental home or privately owned one that, that has the actual state regulation on it. So we hope that's something we can get done fairly quickly. Last thing, I just want to introduce to you our newest junior police officer. So Jeremy Davis and his wife gave birth to a beautiful baby boy who's healthy and should be on her way back home soon. So I also want to point out that, that the shared leave policy that, that council passed a little while back, Jeremy came to us in Virginia, so none of his sick time traveled with him. So he did not have the time to be able to take off and care for his baby and be with his wife. So I'm really proud to say of the 40 some employees in Duck, it took a week, three days and they had donated him enough time to be off for his full FMLA leave.
Oh, wow.
Really generous from our fellow employees there. So it really eased a huge burden on that family. Thank you for, for passing that. And now I'll be quiet.
Chief, kind of a historic question, where do we stand with the league on accreditation?
Well, two different paths. Accreditation is completely stalled, state accreditation. So I am actively working on the risk, the risk assessment is what the league terms it. So it's probably something I won't have done till end of summer at best, but it is, the framework is laid. I'm now having to go back line by line through policy and match requirements to policy. And a lot of cases, it's causing me to have to tweak policy, which is taking extra time. So it's, it's something I wish we were done, but it has, it has turned into a much larger task than I ever imagined that it would be. But we are chugging along.
Just going back to the school bus stop, we may want to consider correspondence that comes from mayor and council as well as town manager and chief of police and put some muscle behind it and send it to the school board.
Yeah, my hope is that I can at least get a initial face-to-face meeting with the interim superintendent and at least talk out this issue and figure out exactly what would be required on their end. I don't know the new, the interim superintendent, but I'm told she's very responsive, so I look forward to, to seeing where we can go with this. But definitely, I think I'm going to need that.
That's the plan.
Let, let, at the staff level, and then if we get resistance or pushback, then we're going to come to you all, resolution. And then if you all know people that are on the school board, if we get stalled at the staff level, phone calls to the school board. Some members individually might help if it comes from one of you all.
Seems like a, a lot of work for something that's fairly simple. I mean, you know, that particular road is a little curvy and dippy. And I thought, wow, does a bus even fit down there? But it must, you know, so.
I feel, I felt strongly if I could get the superintendent to stand on the side of the road with me and see it, then I'll make my case. It's just getting that done. Good at getting things done, so we'll get it done.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Unlike Jeff, I'm going to be really quick. I want to thank Jim Gould for putting this together for me and Kay Nickens. Oh, hi. So permit activity is up and down, just down a little bit overall. And I wanted to point out something pretty sparse on the north side. On the south side, we do see like a little bit of a cluster around Christopher and Scarborough Lane. And this is the slide I wanted to get to mostly. New homes, substantial additions and renovations. We didn't have any this month. Now that might be a shocker, but Jim, I had Jim look back in 2021 and 2020. And I actually went back further than that. In 2021, we only had one new house and one substantial improvement in May. In 2020, we only had one new house. In 2019, we had zero. In 2018, we had one. So generally speaking, May is a slow month. Thank God. Because we kind of need a little break. And I even looked a little further in, you know, in renovations and pools and other. And, you know, generally, they're, they're pretty low across the board. So don't want anybody to spazz out and think that that's a concern. What else is going on? You all know about the Resilient Coastal Communities Program. We are wrapping up the Phase Two deliverables. We've sent our comments back to VHB and we're waiting on the final product from them, which hopefully will be coming to you next month. We are entering Phase Three. We have an application for that grant due on Friday, which Joe is actively working on. Yes, he's cognitively doing great. That Phase Three will involve and prioritize the Neighborhood Stormwater Management Plan that we, we kind of pushing along this whole process. And that will include completion of the Stormwater Management Study and conceptual design of solutions. So once we get through Phase Three, then we'll apply for Phase Four and we'll actually look at implementing a project. Now, we'll probably be multiple projects that are suggested, but we're not going to be able to afford all of them. And this time around, we do have some help from some students at Duke University. They're doing actually research for us in terms of what other opportunities we have for grant funding. The Brick Grant and the Road Raising Project, Crystal Resilient Project Update. We are actively working on securing easements. And we have our first signed one in the office as of this morning. And we're working with several of the property owners, just doing, you know, working through their, their concerns. Robert Hobbs has been a great help, as has VHB. They've been providing us details when people, like, think back when we went to the Nourishment Project in 2017 and people were like, what do we do with our steps? We're like, don't do anything. The same situation's happening now, like it's hard for people to visualize what that two-foot, three-foot elevation is going to do when it hits their property. So trying to talk that through with everyone that's, that's involved. And then lastly, you all know, we had a really bad nor'easter while I was basking in the sun of Aruba. And we have, since I returned, been working to grade down the beach accesses in the nourishment area only. That's been a combination of Merrick and Ben Fordin working on the excavator that they own. And we were lucky enough to get a picture sent to us today with somebody asking what, what was happening, is that allowed? And then I actually went out there to get some video and I was like, oh, there's Ben. So they're doing a great job. And we're also working on getting the debris cleaned up. There's not a ton of debris, but there's more than we're accustomed to on our beach. So this, the lifeguards are working on that. And hopefully by the next meeting that I come to, I can say that the beach is looking beautiful and without any problems. And that's all I have, I hope that will be quick. And I would entertain any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thanks, Sandy.
All right. Good evening, Chief sends her regards. She is in DC owning some IFC business, so she sent me. I will be much quicker than Chief Ackerman, so. Start right off with our normal calls for service for the month. This is one of the, as Chief mentioned, vehicle accidents are increasing. This was one of our calls this month. You can see how we're kind of trending pretty similar to last year. We're picking back up from the 2020 slump. So we're, we're seeing pretty steady rises everywhere right now. Again, how we trend year-to-date over the past five years, you can see it's, it's pretty steady here as well, staying pretty level for us. These, this is again, just the breakdown. So we had 52 incidents this year as opposed to 59 last year. Actually slightly less this year on our EMS calls. We were higher in our actual fires and some of our other hazardous condition calls. Again, just a little better visual for you that breaks out that same thing, kind of shows that we're still holding at about that 55% mark for our EMS calls that we traditionally see. In May, our activities were split again through our training hours. So our career staff had about 204 hours of training. Our volunteers then had an additional 120 combined for that 324 number. And then we are wrapping up our fire inspections for the year. During the season, we try and have all of that wrapped up so that we can not be interfering with business operations during their peak times. Our EMS standby started up last weekend. They were able to send an ambulance for about seven hours on Saturday. And on Sunday, they did not have one available to send to us. But that will continue through the summer as it has, just like we've done in years past, so. We do have a couple of new additions. We've got a new volunteer firefighter, Willie Gardner. He comes to us out of Southern Shores. He actually works in town. We're very excited to get him onboarded and moving forward. He shows a lot of great potential. And then we also brought on a new part-time firefighter mainly due to, as with everyone else that has some issues in staffing, our vol, our part-time list that we have historically maintained are getting a little overworked and burnt out. And we're not able to fill some of the gaps that we were still utilizing them to fill. So we brought in some kind of fresher blood. Brandon Miranda is our, our new part-time guy and, and he is, he's blended very well. He comes to us with a little bit of experience. He's actually from the Hatteras area. So he is eager to be around and, and works very hard when we get to see him, so. Our training this month, we focused on some car fire training. We do tend to see those more in the summer because of the increased traffic volume we have. This is actually, we were able to do a joint training with Southern Shores. They came up with us and we were able to train behind the station, which is good because we all work together, obviously, on all of our mutual aid calls. Couple more pictures of that same car fire training there. And other than that, we are ready for our busy season and trying to make sure we're ready to handle anything that gets thrown at us. Any questions?
Yeah, Trey, I have one for you. When you report fire, can you break that down between mutual aid and duck, fire and duck?
It is actually, if I.
Oh, is it? So those six fires were all in duck?
So what you'll see on here is there is a breakdown for mutual aid and fires. So the, yes, the six fires are in duck. Understanding that when we break out a fire, a mulch fire is considered a fire for us. We had a couple of strange incidents that were actual fires inside of a building that, but weren't fires as you're accustomed to seeing where you get the big picture of the house on fire and see that full response that we were able to handle. Again, for reporting purposes and to be consistent in the way that we logged that, we track all of those as a fire. So that's where you're going to see some of that from time to time.
Do we do mutual aid for Corolla too?
We do. That, we used to, it used to be very much more predominant for us. They have bolstered their staffing up there tremendously in the past few years. So they're not using, utilizing us as much, which is nice. However, it is nice to get the training on away games so that it's not an in-town issue for us. But we, we certainly, we extend our, you know, our help to whoever calls for it, whenever we're able to. Primary mission is still to cover the town and make sure that we're providing the service here. But, but again, extending that help because we also can't, you know, nobody down here can do this job alone. So we rely heavily on that mutual aid to come in and assist us. So we are willing to assist them when they call and ask for that same.
Thank you very much, Deputy Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. I'm also going to be fairly quick this evening. So for May, our financial update. Our total cash on hand ended at $16,576,889. Comparing to last May's cash balance, excluding the new beach nourishment funds, there's been a 28% increase compared to May 2021. This just shows the account balances from May 2021 through May 2022. The town ended May with approximately $1,876,71 held in the general checking account, just a little shy of the 10% we usually like to keep in there. The remaining funds are of course in the investment and beach nourishment bond accounts. Here you'll see the total revenue collections for this year compared to the budget as well as the prior fiscal year. We received sales and use tax for the February collections in the amount of $101,000. Sorry, $101,416. This was a 12.5% increase compared to May of 2021. Property tax collections received in May were $7,700 for the April collections. This brings the town to 99.96% collected. We just have around $2,000 left, which is great. Occupancy tax received in May were for the March collections and that was in the amount of $62,414. We also received $182,000 from Dare County for the shoreline grant for the beach nourishment. Beer and wine tax was distributed from, and that was for the period April 2021 to March 2022. This was in the amount of $2,952, which was a 74% increase compared to last year, which was roughly $1,600.
You think with everything that's drunk around here, it'd be more than that.
Investment earnings continue to increase for our North Carolina Capital Management Trust account. The monthly yield went from 0.23% in April to 0.70 in May with a total earning of $4,489. And from what we've been told, it's going to continue to increase throughout the year. Now this shows the expenditures comparison with the current budget and prior year totals. Overall, our expenses are within budget. I believe year-to-date on the report you received were about 64% of our budget spent. And then lastly, as you can see with the bar graph, the revenues fluctuate from month to month. May, our expenditures were a bit higher than the revenues, but we are still higher on our revenue side, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, that May number includes a fire truck, right?
Yes, that includes the fire truck.
Yep.
If you'll notice in your cash balances, the, the trust account did go down some from transferring expenses. All right, that is all, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
So I'm going to take a turn too. Christian, I didn't tell you this, there's some. Can you see that via the flash? I'll need that in just a second, I can get it. First, I'd like to inform the council. I received an email today. And this is a congratulations to Lori Ackerman, your town clerk, who has received her renewal or redesignation as a North Carolina Certified Municipal Clerk. And that's from the North Carolina Association Municipal Clerks and the School of Government, University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. This is a five-year designation and it requires her to participate in continuing education to continue to keep up with the change in requirements. So congratulations Lori on maintaining that procedure. The other thing, and I apologize, Council, I didn't get you a memo in advance of this. I discussed this briefly with the mayor when we met this morning. We have an opportunity, we and the other towns that are in the beach nourishment project and the, and the county to apply for a grant that would, it's a, it's a one-to-one grant. And the idea that Ken Wilson and his team have come up with for this grant is to begin to do sand reconnaissance. So as we look at, you know, the, the next beach nourishment, we still be okay in, in Borrow Area A, which is where we're getting the sand from this time. But as we look into the future, we, we're going to need to start looking for additional sand. One of the, and I apologize, this is really slow and I, slow, really small. I will send this out to the council so you can see it a little bit bigger. There are a couple of places that CPE is considering doing some reconnaissance. You can see in these, these polygons here. See the cursor rolling around, there's, there's two separate polygons there. This red blob down at the bottom of the screen, that is Borrow Area C, which is where you got some sand from in, in the 2017 nourishment project. So right now, we're going to, in, in this nourishment and the next round, we're planning to use Borrow Area A, which is out off of Kilobul Hills. So it's, it's a little bit of a, of a steam to get the sand up here. So what they're looking to is, you know, can we do some reconnaissance to see if we can find sand sources north of Duck? So these polygons both are, these bigger ones. And again, apologize for being so small. Where the cursor is here, this little white line, that's the county line. So these are both offshore Curata County. And then there's two more that they, that Ken was talking about. And these are up near the Virginia-North Carolina line. We've had one meeting about this. This has all been very hurry-up. Was on a call with the county manager, a representative from Curata County, and then representatives from the other towns yesterday. They've had a subsequent conversation with the county manager. And we're, we're just trying to figure out the, the benefit of this. So we're looking at trying to secure sand for 10 years from now. One of the questions, of course, we asked is, does the, does the reconnaissance get stale? So if we're trying to identify a source of sand that we're going to use in 10 years, are we going to have to re-spend some of this money to go and update it? There will be some updating, but you don't have to go through the whole process. It's, and, and again, the meeting was yesterday and we've asked Ken to give us some more definitive numbers. definitive numbers. And I said, you know, unfortunately, I'm meeting with my council tomorrow night, and I, if you don't have good numbers, I can make an appeal and say, you know, is this, is this something that we're interested in? The total, the total of this is about two million dollars. So that's the reconnaissance and then the design of the, actually of the, of the Borrow excavation. So the, the question is, do we want to, yeah, assuming that other towns agree that they want to participate in this, do we want to do that as well? We're unsure what Currituck County was, will do. The county manager seems to like the idea. I like the idea of knowing where our sand is going to be coming from in the future. We're unsure, again, there's a lot of uncertainty, but there, we're unsure that this grant will be available in the future. So this is, it's an opportunity to get two million dollars' worth of work done for a million dollars split among the, the towns and the county. Don't know what the level of participation of the county would be. And then obviously, if we can get Currituck involved in it, you know, the more people we can split that million with, the, the lower our investment in that is. So I guess the question I have for council is, do you, are you interested in this? And do you want staff to continue to have these conversations and, you know, try to get to the point where we can say, yes, go ahead and apply for this grant? CPE is going to apply for the grant? They've said that they will offer their services to do that. So that's, it's not going to cost us anything for them to apply. But they kind of need to know by the eighth of this month whether or not we want to participate in this. So I wish I had more definitive information, but I just wanted to get a sense from the council, and I can, you know, obviously, we can have additional conversations before, before the eighth of this month. Once I get more information, I can push that out to you all and then get some direction.
Drew, I think, oh, go ahead.
The, uh, it is two big areas that split Dare and Currituck. What happens if Currituck goes in, in, decides in five years they want to use part of that borough area? Or are we, is that ours? We say we want it? How does that work?
So.
First come, first served?
No. It's, they, they could permit to use that same borough area. They could just say, well, you know, go ahead, Dare County and towns, you know, you can do all the reconnaissance and then we'll use your information.
Yeah.
We're hoping that's not the case. But it is, it, it'll be a matter of public record, so they, they could get the information. They, yeah. They have made no indication that we're aware of that they want to get involved in beach nourishment. Looking at the video that Councilman Chiano sent out, there's some places that they're going to need the nourishment.
They better start thinking about it.
Unless they get some security and accretion in there, it just, it, it was, that was pretty bad. The story really tore up some of the beach.
I, I don't know if it's true, but someone said that the position of Currituck County is there'll always be a beachfront, it'll just be further west.
Well, I, I guess in theory, that's true, and I think Duck saw that, and that's why you did your twenty seventeen beach nourishment. It got so far west, it was.
Right.
Putting pools on the beach and then that kind of stuff.
Well, Drew, I, you know, I had the advantage of talking to you this morning about this, and I think one of the big points here too is understand that Nagshead through Southern Shores, everybody has done one hundred percent of their beaches. We've done one point six, one point seven miles, six point two miles of beach. So if our beach, all the starting starts are road over the next five to ten years, we're going to need that sand.
Yeah.
And I think it's worthwhile that we participate with the county and the other towns, whether Currituck's in the play or not. Because, you know, we're talking perhaps a hundred to two hundred thousand dollars. I think we're certainly building a capital reserve fund for beach nourishment. You know, I think it'd be very hard for the council to make a decision between now and the eighth. I think what we ought to do is empower you to deal with the county and make the, the right judgment for the, for the town. I mean, that's where I'm at. I mean, rather than getting us all back together and say, okay, our share is a hundred and twenty, we think we ought to do it, I, I would like to empower you to be in those conversations and, and make the decision for the town. Certainly, I think over the long run, there's going to be affordability, but I think we got to look into, you know, we got a lot of beach we haven't done anything with.
Yeah.
And we may have to. So. Sandy's question too, don't forget, Sandy, that's, that's state and federal sand, it's not, doesn't belong to Currituck County, so.
I, I didn't mean to own by, yeah, but they decide to do beach nourishment.
Oh, yeah.
And use up the, that whole area.
So, so is offshore sand reserve first come, first served?
Sure.
I mean, whoever gets there can use it?
Yeah.
As far as, as far as I know, that's the case. So you need to do, you need to do the reconnaissance, you need to do the, all the, the vibro cords and all that kind of stuff. And then Bone gets involved in, you know, getting a lease to be able to use the, the sand in that Borrow Area. So it, it'll, it'll get regulated. I don't, I don't believe that anybody's going to be in a, it's not like a gold rush for sand.
Yeah.
But again, you know, once, my big thing is, is as we look into the future, where's the sand going to come from? If we can get it from the area number one here, which is the one right on the, right on the line, that lowers our unit cost for the sand because it's so much closer.
Yeah.
Part of this project, I didn't mention, but part of this would also be to do additional reconnaissance in Borrow Area A. So it would have a benefit to the southern towns to, you know, KDH, Kitty Hawk, and Southern Shores, because they, they're looking to expand that, hoping to expand Borrow Area A, moving that a little bit north. So that, that would be part of this whole, this whole project. I'm not a, I'm not a big fan of trying to do reconnaissance, and I don't think the county manager is either, you know, up towards the state line at, at this point. So if we can, if we can trim down some of the, the cost of this and focus on those, the two larger polygons plus Borrow Area A, I think that, that's where my thinking is right now, and I need to get back with Mr. Hobbins and see where, where he is today after a meeting yesterday.
You know, I think we have to take the approach to a beach nourishment, it's going to be here forever. Then, you know, unless in fact the whole island gets wiped out, but I think it's going to be here forever, and I think, you know, it's, it's in the longer range plan.
We, we've learned a lot over the last two projects, and one of the things that really sticks out is the fact that as much as you might think there's a whole lot of sand out there to be had, it hasn't been there. And Borrow Area C didn't make, make it as far as they wanted. And we are, a lot of more, more folks are interested in what we do have. So I agree that it is fruitful to be looking around. I keep thinking that science is going to keep up a little ahead of all the, of our needs here. But one question I had that I couldn't determine just from these pictures is, how does that size of that polygon compare to Borrow Area A? Is it about the same size, or is it larger or smaller?
Borrow Area A is in the upper right corner of the screen.
Oh, I thought that was, okay, so the little dark one is C.
Correct.
And the upper, oh, oh, yes, really large. Oh, that's good.
So, and these are areas of reconnaissance now. So when you get to the, the actual Borrow Area, it'll be, it'll be a smaller.
Okay.
Polygon, similar probably to Borrow Area A.
Yeah. I think it makes sense to get the, get the data.
You know if they've ever explored those areas, Drew? Maybe you could ask, ask Ken that question, if they've ever explored any of those areas? If this is the ones that are proposed, I mean, that, for reconnaissance.
Yeah, I, I, my understanding is that they have not been.
I wouldn't think so.
What did you ask?
If they've explored.
Looked at those areas for sand.
Oh, I'm sure they would have told us. Yeah, they should have, they would have told us, I think, but they did go out there searching quite a bit the first time around.
Yeah.
And then you run into all kinds of hazards that, you know, sunken ships and, and artifacts, and there's a whole bunch of stuff that makes it like, nope, cannot use this. Interesting.
Well, I'd like to recommend that we let Drew go ahead and deal with the managers and the county manager, and if in fact you need to get some consensus from council, I'm sure we could do a special Zoom type meeting if people aren't here, because I know a couple of us might be traveling between now and the eighth.
Yeah, if we, if we need some sort of an official action, I don't. We don't need an official action to apply for a grant, do we, Mr. Hobbins?
I don't know.
It'll be a commitment of funds.
I think it sounds like it.
Within your budget authority, it's within the budget, you can find, without, without the action, but, you know, it may require a budget amendment eventually.
Yes, so it, you know, it will need to do a, a budget amendment, Mr. Hobbins is saying. So in order to pre-audit any, any expenditure, we would need to do that. But initially, to apply for the grant is not going to cost us anything. So once the grant is, grant is granted, at that point, we'll need to do a budget amendment in order to provide the funding for it.
But we can tell you that we conceptually agree with the concept of exploring.
Right.
This and identifying sand sources for the future. And then therefore, you can apply for the grant, yeah?
Yeah, right. And then I'll just, obviously, I'll keep you all informed as, and, and I, I really don't like to stand up in front of you all without all the facts, and I just don't have them tonight.
Yeah.
Because this is all moving very quickly. So I'll, I'll communicate out with y'all, let you know what, what I'm hearing and what direction it's heading. And if, obviously, if you have any problem with that when you receive the communication from me, call me up and say, I got a problem with it, and we'll, and we'll figure it out.
I think it's good that county's involved too, and especially when you consider, you know, their nourishment's all south of Nagshead. So I think that we're on agreement, we'll let it, town manager go ahead and negotiate and certainly get the facts and.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Hey, moving right along, go to item ten, the mayor's agenda. I have a few things. I have a mayor's chairman meeting coming up on June twenty-first in Kill Devil Hills. Just for the record, I attended my last League of Municipalities Board Executive Meeting. Even though I'm no longer on the board, the executive committee calls over until they name a new executive committee, so in May, I had to attend the executive committee for the board. I do have my local leadership foundation board meeting coming up also in June. And the other thing I'd like to talk about tonight, cheers, very briefly, but we have coming up before the council, we have our town manager's review coming. And we do this generally in the timeframe of late June to early August. And I put together a timeline here. Please pass this to the council. And what I'd like to do tonight is just kind of formalize the approach. There's no action really needed until we get into July. But the proposed schedule really was starting tonight, the look at the schedule. Early July, July sixth, we'll distribute blank review forms to the council and to the town manager. We'd ask by July twentieth, the town manager submits his completed review form with comments to the council. And then the following week, the council submits their completed review form, and Monica's agreed once again to coordinate this to the Mayor Pro Tem for consolidation, and then we'd actually do the review and close session on August third, twenty twenty-two. So that's, that's proposed, that keeps us on the schedule. I know Tony, you weren't part of it last year, but we did do his review in the first meeting of, of August last year as, as per the contract. And a, and a second item on that is, I'd like to talk with you, Robert, and John, about his contract, and maybe perhaps suggest to council, as we get into that August review, of a minor change, mostly being that we have a two-year contract with the town manager, and I think we should in fact adjust that, and, but it'll be, you know, council's decision, but I'll talk to you about maybe some format of how we would make an amendment to that contract. And so those two items, that's all I have for tonight, and there'll be more correspondence coming, and I'll get the blank forms out to you as appropriate later in the month. Any questions on that?
No.
Well, now, let's move on to item number eleven, council members' agenda. We'll start with Mayor Pro Tem, Monica Thibodeau.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to just report in on the Visitors Bureau action that I've been involved in. We, the Visitors Bureau recently did agree to sign on to the amicus brief for the Mid-Curritack Bridge, and so that was, that was good. There's a lot of talk about traffic and traffic flow. They also are interested in supporting, as you may have read in the, in the papers, for the update and change and recreation, if you will, of Visitors Bureau site, the, the center that, you know, the, I guess it's just the visitor's center that, that will maybe, if things go according to their, the dream, make, be a complete renovation and a huge Wright Brothers site. I don't know if anybody's seen that, but Kitty Hawk has been talking quite a bit about it with, and it would be, it's completely private developer who has a lot of, a lot of memorabilia or, you know, authentic Wright Brothers planes, reconstructed, authentic planes, as well as it would be classrooms, it would be a, an observatory. So there's just a lot of really cool opportunities for this really neat Wright Brothers center that would, you know, and ultimately just dovetail and complement what we have at the national park. So there's just, that was kind of an exciting thing. The Visitors Bureau was interested in making sure that we had a viable and fully operational visitors' site for folks to come in and stop when they first get here, and that is part of the initial plan. So interesting developments happening there. It's all privately funded if it all goes through, so that would really be a neat boon for the area, and everyone loves the idea of using that site for a lot of reasons. So that was kind of exciting. But another thing that, that, so that was just on the side, that Visitors Bureau was sort of, you know, endorsing or saying that they go along with it. Visitors Bureau is actively pursuing, you know, improving the Soundside Event Site with a boardwalk that's been inspired by the Duck Boardwalk. We get referenced quite a bit. And so, as well as a really nice open concept, enclosed, multipurpose event hall. And they had a public hearing on the boardwalk already to get, you know, public comment on that. And then Monday at nine o'clock at Haven on the Banks, so this coming Monday, the sixth, at nine AM, is a public hearing talking about the building itself and how that, that, that building would function. So if anybody's interested in attending that public hearing, that would be the time and place, Monday morning at Haven on the Banks, which is right on, in Nagshead on one fifty-eight. The only other thing I was going to mention was, because I attended a volunteer orientation meeting, maybe some others folks have done it, I was at the one in the evening, and I just was really impressed with the meeting. I've been to a lot of those volunteer orientation meetings, and I have to give big hats off to Kristen, Betsy, and our public safety chiefs for being there, really talking, giving a really thorough overview and making the volunteers realize how kind of critical they are for getting good information to each other. I mean, it was very, very well done, very professional, and not just a casual, hey, we're going to be the volunteers. It was way more, it made you think, I thought. It made you really think about your role. They talked NIMS, you know, and, and the structure, hierarchy of being a volunteer. So really great job on that. Kudos to the staff for that. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Monica. Councilmember Mooney?
Yeah, I just have one question for you, Drew. The DOT project that they're going to do starting on the seventh, do you have any ideas, or have they told you how long that might last?
So what Mr. Mooney's talking about is some resurfacing they're going to do on Duck Road in the area of.
Acorn Oak.
Acorn Oak. A couple of days max. Yeah, so they're going to, they're going to mill it and repave it. They pushed out the, the date keeps changing, and the reason Mr. Mooney knows is he, he was the one that asked me initially about, is DOT going to do what they said they would do with the retreat? And I, so I've been following back up with him. So that will happen on the seventh, I think is the latest. It was the, we got two different emails today. The second one, I think, was the seventh.
Right.
Yeah. And they'll, they'll have to maintain, obviously, they'll maintain traffic control and all that kind of stuff.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Rob. Councilmember Sandy Whitten?
I just wanted to thank, thank the staff for everything they did with the Shakespeare I attended also. And to the staff that have been doing in-house repair work, like the, the soundboard. soundboards in here repairing the boardwalk. That cost us very little. And I also attended that volunteer meeting, and it was the same information that Monica said, I won't repeat it, but it was very good.
Thank you, Sandy. Councilmember Twain Chanel?
The only thing I have is I attended the government, education, and access channel meeting. It was, it was a pretty brief meeting, but nonetheless, they're geared up for the summer. They produced a lot of public safety and public information videos, which are streaming or available on Comcast and YouTube, dealing with the things we talked about, beach safety, hurricane season, traffic safety, bike safety, all of that. So those are out there. And a kind of a side, a side issue, but, you know, the shooting in Texas was obviously on everybody's mind, and we just talked about the Deer County situation, and they do have remote access locks on all of the, all of the facilities, you know, so that people cannot come in and out unless they either have the right access or they buzz someone. So we do have, you know, controls on that, which was, which was good to hear. So anyway, just a side note. That's all I have.
They also have resource officers in all the schools.
They do, that's right, they have resource officers at all the facilities.
Yeah. In fact, that's a good question for you, chief. Has there been any training, any additional training, or any exercise, or any conversation about, you know, Deer County being ready for a situation like that?
No additional training since the incident, but I can tell you that this county has trained over and over and over again. It's been at the forefront, so I'm quite certain the response you'd see would be very different.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Item number 12, would any, anyone from the public like to address the council again this evening? There being none, is there any other business to come before the council this evening? There being none of that, we'll go on to the next scheduled meeting, will be the mid-month meeting on Wednesday, June 15th, at 1:00 p.m. With that, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. All favorably say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed, aside this rule, we are now adjourned.